All right, we're ready to start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for February 21st, 2017. We have a fairly short agenda tonight, so we'll see. First item on the agenda is minutes.
Could I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 12th, 2016? December 20th, 2016, January 3rd, 2017, January 10th, 2017, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our future schedule, we're next scheduled for regular meetings on March 7th and March 21st. We are going to be posting a notice of an executive session only next week, I believe, Tuesday night, so that will be posted, but there will be no open session items on that agenda. We have potential April dates of April 4th and the 18th. Does anyone have a conflict on those dates?
April 4th looks fine. I gotta check April 18th, I don't know.
That's school vacation week.
It is.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, that's not gonna work for me on that date.
Okay, so let's, we'll figure, we'll offline figure out the April dates and confirm them on March 7th. Do we have anyone tonight for citizen speak? Seeing none. The first item on our agenda is a report by our Inspection Services Director, Joe Prondak.
Hi, Joe.
Good evening. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening.
Hi, Joe Prondak, Building Commissioner. So, we're about halfway through the fiscal year. I think the first thing I always like to talk about is, you know, building permit activity. I think I provided some data on where we're at with that. Still, still a very active construction scene, lots of additions, renovations, new homes, teardowns and rebuilds of existing homes. So, the, I can go through each one individually, or if you just wanted to hear the total, the total permit fees, which again is indicative of the activity, $638,566. And then on top of that, our reconciliation fees where we, you know, we go back and look at the actual cost after the, after the project is complete, added another $25,000 to that. And then we do our periodic inspections, such as the ones we do each year for the liquor licenses, and that's just over $9,000. So, a total of $673,000 in revenues, just over halfway through the year, so it looks like we will at least match, if not, if not supersede what we did last year. And again, that just speaks to the, to the healthy economy here in Milton and the permit activities, so people are confident, still. I know that, that can change on a dime. Hopefully, it won't. So, other than that, which, as I've said a number of times, we still fall short now, right now, in our zoning enforcement. We do it as we can in between permit activity, you know, and we get, we get complaints from people saying, you know, "My neighborhood's going downhill," and I agree with them that it is, and what I see and what my staff sees, when we're out in the field, we see more than anybody because we're all over town, and it is happening. You know, the unregistered cars, debris, debris in yards, and just in general unkempt property situations. So, we're anxious to get back to that. We do as much of it as we can, when we can. We remain hopeful that zoning enforcement officer will become a reality at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, that's where we stand with that. We are, it's, it's, for a while, has been a goal of mine to add an educational piece to our output, so to speak, for lack of a better term. And again, a zoning enforcement officer would, would help open up that, some time to do that. But I did almost, I was approached by a gentleman who's about to, he's, he's providing a six-week course at Milton High School at the Evening Education Program, and he's asked me to, so the, it's a six-week course, each night is divided into two segments, and he's asked me to do one. So, the course is essentially walking homeowners through the construction process, and he's asked me to do one segment one night on, on the building and zoning end of it. So, I think, and, and as I met with him and discussed exactly what he does, he may be interested in partnering with us to develop a program. Program I have in mind would be for contractors, because it's difficult for contractors to stay up-to-date on building codes and zoning, and the state does fall short on providing training for that, and it would be helpful to us. It would make our process better and easier and faster if the contractors were more up-to-date, up to speed. So, I'm hopeful that we can make that a reality. It's a goal down the road, just in its very early stages now, but at least I have, I have a stepping stone now, whereas I was just kinda floundering before, so I feel that is progress. That's all I have at the moment. Can I answer any questions?
Joe, I'm glad you brought up the code enforcement and the zoning enforcement, because that's something that, that is a position that's in the contingent budget, and while we've got, you know, you sitting here at a televised meeting, I think it would be helpful if we said a little bit more to explain that, because that's an example where we have some gaps in service that have happened over the years, because budgets, you know, we've had lean budgets for quite a number of years, so we haven't been able to fill a position such as that, and you've, you've asked for this previously. And enforcing the code and enforcing zoning and getting unregistered cars out our front lawns and, and making sure that home, people who own homes or businesses, that they're keeping those properties up and maintaining them the way we want them to be maintained, because it goes to the character of the town and the quality of life. Can you speak a little bit more? How, has there been a big difference over the years in the amount of enforcement services you've been able to do? Can you give any specific numbers on, you know, how much of that or what type of you've been able to do in the last year or two, and what you would like to do?
I haven't really done a detailed study on it, but I, but just experience over the years tells me if we get, if we were to get 100 complaints a year, and sometimes it's more than that, and able to resolve, let's say, in a year's time, 75 of those, I'd say we're getting to maybe 20 through the course of a year. Just, it's just kind of a rough number off the top of my head, you know, and again, the problem, the problem is that the building permit volume is so high, and people are paying fees for our services to, you know, to issue those permits, review plans, do inspections, that we have to prioritize those as number one, and the zoning unfortunately does take a backseat. Not sure if that answered your question.
And the zoning, if you have a zoning person full-time, or whoever it is in the department, that person needs to go to court to enforce a lot of these matters.
Yeah.
There's a lot of follow-up. It's not just a matter of going out and issuing a ticket, there's a lot of follow-through, so it's really a pretty involved process.
Correct. It's not, it, I mean, yeah, either issuing a ticket or writing a letter of violation or a citation is only one step in the process. Because ultimately zoning is enforced in the court system, you have to treat every case as though it may go to court, so it has to be a very detailed inspection, very detailed reporting, very detailed letter, and then, and then timely follow-up. A lot of times what happens is, we get out there, we look, we make notes, we write the letter, we give somebody 30 days to comply, and then all of a sudden, 90 days later, you know, we haven't had the time to get back to that. But it, but there is some detail, a level of, certain level of detail required, and the, the person, should we be successful in filling that position, that person will not, will not touch building permit activity. I think one of the problems in, some time ago, I think before I got here, there was a part-time inspector hired to do both, to assist with building code stuff and do some zoning enforcement, and, and he pretty much segued right all into building code enforcement, and zoning again took a backseat. So, I don't want it to take a backseat, I wanna, I wanna prioritize it. It's just difficult to do right now with, again, the, the level of activity that we have with building permits.
Yeah, and it's not only, it's not only, you know, keeping the town clean, but, which it does obviously do, and make it, but it's, but it's also a, it really helps in terms of law enforcement and, you know, crime prevention and everything else.
It's a quality of life.
Yeah, and it's also, yeah, property values as well.
Absolutely.
It helps keep up, you know.
When you look at the amount of permits that you have coming in, and the fees associated with it, and the amount of building that's happening, it pretty much dictates the need for that. You know, I think that that's, back to the contingent side where it's important.
Yeah, and I think, 'cause I've heard comments before from people that, that say, "Well, you've taken so much money, why can't you just hire somebody and?"
Doesn't work that way.
Yeah, unfortunately, the money has to go back into the general fund and then reappropriate it, but that is a common misconception, that I should be able to.
It is, and your department is a revenue generator, which is important, and there's obviously a real demand in town for the building permits. People putting on additions to their homes or doing some other renovations, so that's very necessary customer service as well as bringing in revenue, but, you know, so we, so that's an area where we've had a lot of, service in the enforcement area fall in recent times, and we'd like to really fill those gaps, so that's why, that's an important request in the contingent budget.
Yep, and I, one other thing that almost slipped my mind, so we know that some years ago, we went to online, a computerized permitting system, which is helpful, every computer system has its drawbacks, but that has been helpful. Back when we got that, there was an option to have tablets that were tied to the system for the inspectors out in the field, but those tablets had to, had to be incorporated into the system. It just was cost prohibitive at the time, but now, it appears that we can do that with just a regular tablet. Each tablet would have its own Verizon account where you'd get unlimited data. So, hopefully, you know, so when an inspector goes out in the field, can then just take the tablet with them and put any notes right into the electronic permitting system right from the field, instead of having to write stuff down, bring it back to the office.
Transcribe it.
Put it into the system. So, anything we can do to, to improve efficiency, we're looking at. The overall cost of that, we're looking at, you know, two tablets right now, it will be about 300 bucks, and it'll be 50 bucks a month, I'm sorry, 40 bucks a month per tablet for unlimited data. So, I'm excited about that. Hopefully, I don't know if I can do it. I might be able to do it before July 1st, but, but certainly July 1st on, and that will improve, improve some efficiency, and again, every little bit of efficiency we improve on the building code side, we free up time to do zoning work.
Sounds good.
Anyone, any other comments or questions?
Just in, in my two-and-a-half months' head, the work that's done at the desk by, by Joe and his staff is phenomenal, the amount of people that come in and out.
It's a busy department.
Yeah, the wait time's very short, but with respect to the enforcement piece of it, I find them to be very reactive, right? And I think proactivity is, is the key to maintaining that, that baseline, where Joe would like to get his department, and then, then it's just day-to-day operations, so I think that code enforcement officer is very necessary to getting Joe up to that baseline and then, and then working through the day-to-day stuff.
I totally agree.
Agreed.
All right, if nothing else for Joe or from Joe, then?
I think, I think I'm finished.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, folks.
Item number six on our agenda is bond anticipation notes, and I'm going to be recused on this one, because I work with the attorney who does bond council, work with the town treasurer, who's also here, and I'm gonna ask David to take this part of the meeting.
Be happy to. Mr. Treasurer, how are you?
Good, good. We did a, we're doing a band for capital items, roadways, DPW locker room, police hot water upgrades, heating upgrades, new fire truck, playground equipment, phone systems, wireless upgrade, a front-end loader, and a dump truck for the DPW. The total is $2,194,410. We had the bid, we had the auction the other day, had three bids. Eastern Bank came in at 1.20, Century came in at 1.20, Unibank came in at 1.25. We took the Eastern bid, they were the first one to the table, so we, they bid on the entire amount of the debt, so we awarded it to them. So, tonight we have to approve that. We also have a refunding coming up for the library and some of the school debt. It's our last bite at the refunding apple. I had Brianna Soucely, our financial advisor, run the numbers, and as of the day she ran them, they'll save us $681,000. So, it is worth doing.
In total?
In total, yeah. So, out of that, there is some of the Fireman's Pickens debt in there that will lower the debt limit, but the rest of it's going back to the taxpayers.
Right, right.
So, that's all we have.
Yes, we have a motion before us.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award the $2,194,410 Town of Milton, Massachusetts General Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes municipal purpose loan dated March 8th, 2017, and maturing March 8th, 2018, to Eastern Bank at a net interest cost of 1.2 percent.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Nope.
Are you seeing all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also, with the refunding, we moved up the schedule a little bit to do it earlier, because the Federal Reserve's meeting, either the 14th or 15th of March, we wanted to do prior to that, because I think they have jumped another quarter of a point.
Yeah, interesting.
So, we'd like to get it sold before that happens. So, we're having an S&amp;P Rating Call meeting on the 27th at 12 o'clock, if anybody's available to come to that.
Great.
And then hopefully, we can sell them. March 9th is the seal. So, it'll be sold before, if the rates jump. We'll already have jumped it.
Okay.
Great.
What's the total amount of that refund?
The total amount of the refund is $6,795,000.
Okay. Are we gonna run a file of bank-qualified?
No.
Well, not in this issue, but I mean, then we'll, we'll, do we have an August issue this year?
We have an August issue. It shouldn't be that large, it's just that the remaining of the issue is capital expenses. So, we should be under it.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Do you need something notarized?
Yes. Yes. If you don't mind, Jim, if you wouldn't mind staying, we're gonna move that item up, so as not to inconvenience you. Thank you. Thank you, David.
All right, so the treasurer was kind enough to agree to stay and notarize a document for us, so we're gonna move number nine up next on the agenda, which is, and Mr. Clark is here, an amendment to a regulatory agreement regarding affordable housing for the Woodmere project. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. The only difference on this is, this has the amounts for the affordable units at Woodmere, which is up off of Brushhill Road. I think, two bid numbers, what, 194 and the other is?
216.5.
216.5. Those are DHCD-approved numbers.
And for anyone who's watching, Woodmere is the project up at the St. Pius Rectory, that former site that's now being developed as condominiums.
It's 36 units, there are four affordables. The affordables have, the permits have been pulled, the foundations have been poured, the, they're starting the framing on those units now.
Good.
So, there are gonna be four very lucky people that are gonna get them.
They'll be ready, yes, they'll be ready end of summer.
Good.
Great. Okay. We have a motion before us, to approve and sign an amendment to Exhibit B of the regulatory agreement for the Woodmere at Brushhill location, excuse me, local action unit project.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Thank you, Bill. And, Mr. Mc, do we want to pass them around? Can we sign them, and then we'll give them to Mr. McCall, so that he can take them with him? And thank you again, Jim, for notarizing these for us, we appreciate it. While we're waiting for those, why don't we take up number eight, which is the one-day liquor licenses?
Sure. I'll move to approve four one-day liquor licenses for the Milton Arts Center, 334 Ed Hill Road, and one for a fundraiser on Friday, March 17th, 2017, from 7:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., and three for concerts to be held Friday, April 7th, Friday, May 5th, and Friday, June 2nd, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Okay. Now, further propose a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Spirit of Adventure Council for an event to be held at the Egan Center at 411 Uncity Road for the dedication of the Thomas Kershaw atrium on Thursday, March 16th, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Emily, and thank you very much, Jim. Okay, back to number seven. We have a request to designate the Senior Public Health Consultant as a special municipal employee for purposes of Chapter 268(a) of the general laws. And we have, we have a draft motion written by town council. The background on this, just very briefly, is, I think the board knows, Laurie Stillman, who's a former school committee member, is working as a consultant to the Board of Health Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition under a grant, and has been doing that for a couple of years, and works a limited number of hours, and is doing a lot of good work for them, and doing a lot of volunteer work as well for that cause. She's been asked by the school department to do some consulting work for a limited duration for the school department, and in order to, in order for any one person to do any kind of work for two departments, the, the existing position would need to be designated as a special municipal employee for purposes of, of the conflict of interest laws at the state level.
So, the key thing here is, it's, it's the position, not the person, that we're designating a?
That's right.
It sounds funny, because you're designating somebody as an employee, but you're designating a position as a special municipal, so anybody that sits in that position, henceforth, as long as they're either a volunteer or a part-time employee not paid more than 30 hours a week, I believe it is.
There's a total, it's 800 hours a year that you can't go over, and this position is nowhere close to that, and?
Like 20 hours a year, so, yeah, something like that, but?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So?
So, so the position does meet the qualifications.
It does, and town council has reviewed this and has drafted a motion for us.
And the other thing, I guess just to let people out there know, that it, it only exempts you from two of the conflict of interest areas, and it doesn't exempt you from, you can't really, that special municipal employee position can't represent their own, what do you call it, department, or, so in other words, Laurie couldn't represent the Board of Health if she's a Board of Health, but she can represent other departments.
And I think that goes to the issue of working for two departments, to some extent. So, so that's all that this is. This is not a new position that's being created or funded, this is an existing consultant, and it's in both positions, Board of Health and the school department, both of these are grant-funded, so there's no, these are not, these payments are not being made by the town, it's through a grant.
And they still may be subject to procurement, that's up to whatever's in the grant, and, you know, whatever's in 30B, because if you have a grant, you're always subject to 30B.
So, I'll make a motion that pursuant to Chapter 268(a), Section 1 of the Massachusetts general laws, to classify the position of senior public health consultant as a special municipal employee position under the terms and provisions of said Chapter 268(a).
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. And thank you very much to our senior public health consultant, Laurie Stillman. She's doing a lot of good work for the Substance Abuse Coalition, we're lucky to have her. Okay, the next item, then, we're onto number 10, I believe we've covered all of the others, which is a discussion of the town meeting articles. And we had a meeting with the warrant committee last week, in which they, they voted in favor of recommending several of our articles, which was a good thing. There are a few that we need to have some follow-up discussion on, and that we needed to bring back some, not that we'll have the answers tonight, but we may have to do a little bit of follow-up to get back to the warrant committee on some of these items. I know one of them, the town administrator is working on, which is the revolving fund for the Consolidated Facilities Department, so they've asked for some additional information.
Yeah, specifically on that, too. That's one of the areas that changed on the municipal modernization bill, and it appears now that you need, rather than things being approved every year, it becomes a bylaw. That is my reading of it. So, so we're not voting, so town meeting would, would vote a new bylaw, as opposed to voting a revolving fund, and all the specifics of the revolving fund would be in the bylaw, so then you wouldn't have to vote it year after year, it's, it becomes a bylaw unless you're gonna change it in some way.
So, that's different than the way our article is styled?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay, so, well, that, you've actually added a new question then to the list that we have, so we have to check the Modernization Act. But the questions that I wrote down that came up at the warrant committee were, should, right now, it's only covering the town hall building, and the question was, should it apply to other buildings, if there's any solar panels on other buildings? They, they seem to like that idea.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've?
I talked to Bill Ritchie, he likes that idea as well.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't wanna be pigeonholed into sitting on funds for this building if this building is, in fact, as energy efficient as possible, and that he can use it in one of the other buildings in town. So, he appreciated that. He did clarify that it's, it's about, almost $750 a month. I know Chair Michael McLean, they talked about them selling credits, and it depends what your credits go for, and?
Right.
So, there is some ambiguity to it, but the numbers we proclaimed, about $400, were a little bit on the low side, so.
Oh.
Could be even more on that revolving fund.
Okay, so I guess the question for us is, do we need to reopen the warrant at a future meeting, 'cause it's not on tonight's agenda, and?
We may have to for some reason.
Revise that, because right now, it's only specific to one building, so we might have a scope issue at town meeting. All right, so we need to check on that. We may have to reopen and close the warrant for a couple of different reasons, in any event, so, all right, it sounds like we've got some good information. So, Mike, would you recommend that we then go back and apply this to other buildings and?
Yes.
Write it not just for the town office building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
The ones that the warrant committee approved were the, the home rule petition for the liquor license for Two Adams Street, the Wharf Street easement, town hall office hours, and the capital article. We did not really have, we had a short but not a lengthy discussion about the speed, the fundamental speed limit. We had Chief King there for his budget that night, so we, the warrant committee did ask him for his thoughts on it, and Tom and I just weighed in very briefly on it, but we're gonna take that one back up on March 8th.
March, yeah, March 8th, right.
And they did ask for some data, whether there's any, anything we can come up with in terms of accident reduction, but?
It's kinda, it's kinda too new at this point.
Yeah, you pointed that out, Tom, so not sure we'd really be able to get anything for that. The master plan implementation article, there was some question about which budget perhaps should go in, they talked about maybe separate budget, should it go into the planning boards, line item, so we did, we were tasked with doing a little bit of follow-up on that, and I know town administrator did some.
I spoke with town accountant, Amy texted the following day, and you can, you can create a line in, in any of your accounts, general accounts for that.
Even the master plan?
Even the master plan, yeah.
Yeah.
She suggested possibly putting into the planning board's budget, creating a line item for it specifically, but, yeah, it's not something extraordinary.
The thing is, the way it's written, we want for the money to be spent, it to be with the approval of both the planning board and this board.
Right, that's why it may make more sense for it not to be?
If it's in the planning board budget.
Yeah, to be in its own.
We talked to the planning board about it, I know they've had some discussion about this article. The road stabilization fund article. Tom, I think you were looking into some questions for them about whether bond proceeds could be deposited into the fund, and what the amount should be?
Yeah, and I haven't got an answer on that yet.
Okay.
I think we have to talk to town council, but, you know, the real question is, you know, the specific, I mean, it's simple enough to set up the special purpose stabilization fund and with, you know, whatever, but, but if you want it to be tagged to an override number, which was my thought, that you're carving out part of the override to be specifically that, is there any special language that you're gonna need for that? And I'm not sure. I mean, that would memorialize that, whatever that number is. I mean, that would memorialize that, whatever that number is.
So how do you want to handle that? Do you want to follow that up with town?
Yeah, I'll see if I can talk to John Flynn and see if I can get an answer on it.
Okay. All right, so the ones that I believe, aside from the fundamental speed limit, the ones that we have to go back to them on the 8th are the traffic commission, the article that the firefighters brought to us about the military compensation, and then possibly the alcohol sales tax, although I guess there's a question whether we wanted to defer that one?
I think we were looking to defer that to October...
Okay.
To get a little bit more information on that, and I think you'd need a little bit more support and advocacy, I think, on that.
Okay.
You know, and I think that with the Substance Abuse Coalition doing what they're doing, and, you know, now having Laurie playing even more of a vital role in that, you know, and really seeing day after day the issues that are occurring with the opioid crisis, that this could be something favorable that the taxpayers may be interested in. So I think it may be a little bit more time and, you know, education needed for that, but that's just my opinion on that.
That makes sense to me. Tom, you as well?
Yes, does, actually.
All right, so that's probably a second, we'll just need to reopen the warrant and withdraw that and let the warrant committee know, and then close the warrant, so we could handle both of those at the next meeting, I think. Is that the universe of our articles? I think it is.
I think so.
Yeah, I believe the procurement officer, which we co-sponsor, but it's really the town government study committee, that's going to the warrant committee on March 1st.
The only question on that one is whether we actually even needed it to be a warrant article, because the...
We discussed that, yeah.
Yeah. I guess it doesn't hurt to be a warrant article, but I'm not sure based upon the language in the national law that it was even necessary.
I sent your comment after the last, that last meeting. I sent it over to, well, I just wrote an email to Rick Neely just telling him you had brought it up at the meeting, and I haven't heard back as to whether they've worked into any of that, so...
All right, okay.
Okay. Any other town meeting articles we want to discuss? Okay, then if not, we're on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very busy two weeks since we last met. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to tell today by the amount of snow that's still out there, but we had a couple of significant snowstorms. I want to thank all the Consolidated Facilities Group and Tom McCarty's DPW crew for their operations out there and getting the snow moved, and in some cases, removed. Hopefully, spring is coming. On that note, we had a very robust meeting with the Milton Playground Planners and the Parks Department. Looks like John Baxter and Dave Perdios and the Parks Crew are going to excavate the structure that's currently at Shields Playground in mid-March to help the DPW and their equipment and get ready for an April installation of the new playground at Shields, which, touch wood, if Mother Nature allows, will be ready for our April vacation.
It's great news.
For a new playground.
It is great news.
Yeah, so...
They've worked hard, they've, it's amazing what they've accomplished in such a short period of time, and, you know, it just shows you what, you know, community working together, and then, you know, working with government, you can get to a good result quick.
Yeah, that's true.
I think the Playground Planners have their next big fundraiser this Saturday, that yard sale that they're having is at Pierce Middle School on Saturday.
Yeah, and not to get ahead of themselves, but they were already talking about the next one, which would be Mary Lane, so...
It's great news.
Great work being done, and a very coordinated effort between Dave Perdios's group and, DPW's going to lend some equipment, John Baxter's crew's going to take that stuff down and get it ready, so very good news there. The proposal for audit services would due Friday. We received five proposals. The Audit Committee is now reviewing them, take a look at where everyone came in, so that's good news. Looked very quickly at the prices, very competitive, I think $58,000 a year now for audit services, and they were all in the 50s, so some competitive stuff, a lot of competition, which is always good. Storm audit bills went out last week, most people, they receive them in the mail today or they'll get them in the mail tomorrow. We did get a bunch of phone calls today, both at the DPW Yard and here at Town Hall. What we've done is we've posted on Facebook and Twitter a link to the storm water management, which should answer most of any of the residents or entities' questions. If they don't, please feel free to reach out to Alan Bishop or anyone down at the DPW Yard. So those, if you haven't, if you didn't get it today, you should get it tomorrow. Double poles, there's been some work going on, even in the winter months, getting some poles removed. It's a very time-consuming, utilities have to come out, remove theirs, and then it has to go down a chain of events. There is a software system in place that notifies, you know, RSENs done with their wires, they have to notify Comcast, Comcast has to notify Eversource, et cetera, et cetera, but there is progress being made, so Jack Clabro's going to go next week and do a circle check and see, in fact, what has been completed. RSENs notifying us that they completed eight poles that have been delegated to them, and they'll push it through the system now to the next utility to get some of these double poles, which are an ISO, removed. Tomorrow, there's an Iwo Jima ceremony at the State House. Veteran Services Kevin Cook will be escorting Mr. Joel Krenski, marine veteran and Milton native, up there. And Representative Driscoll is supposed to be in attendance, but, you know, we salute Mr. Krenski for his service, and should be a special event up there tomorrow, hopefully the weather's good for them. And lastly, I'd just like to thank longtime resident Jamie Heggie. He put on the first-ever Milton Pond Hockey Day, Saturday at Cunningham Pond, yeah. I didn't get the exact number of children that were there, but there were six games going on at once, started off around 8:30 in the morning and wrapped up with pizza and snacks for the kids around 12:30. It was very well-attended.
Incredible community event. I was there, it was amazing, hundreds and hundreds of people, and I think it might have thrown off the dog walkers a little bit, so apologies to the dog walkers who are used to having a lot of, I guess, open space and time, but I think they enjoyed it, too, because I think that a lot of people brought their dogs as well and, you know, enjoyed the day. It was just, it was a real good community event, one that will happen forever, and so credit to Jamie.
Yeah, great job. That's about it from here.
Okay, I just looked up the date of the Playground Planner's yard sale. It is this Saturday, the 25th of February, at Pierce Middle School, 9 to 3, so that's a big fundraiser for them. Anyone who's shopping for any household items or children's clothing or any of those sorts of things, help out the Playground Planners to help them raise money for their next phase of the park project. I just want to report out two things. One is that tomorrow night at 6 o'clock in Boston at the Transportation Building, the FAA and Massport are having their RNAF study, this is the first public meeting, so it's 10 Park Plaza, the State Transportation Building, again, 6 o'clock, and a number of people from Milton are going, but if, there's always, the greater presence, the better, so if there's anyone who's watching who would like to go, feel free to call the office tomorrow, and we can provide that information to you. And then, secondly, the, last week on the Henry's Project, the Conservation Commission approved a notice of intent for the Henry's Project, so they voted unanimously to issue that, a decision has to be written, and I think they were hoping that this week or next week they'd get their written decision out, and then there's a period before it becomes final, so that's good news for the project. It's gotten permitted by the Planning Board and approval by the Conservation Commission, so we're through the regulatory hurdles and we're on to the next stage very shortly.
Great news.
Congratulations to Jerry and Steve Connolly for getting all of that approved.
Absolutely.
Anyone have anything to report tonight?
I've got two reports. One, we had a very productive payment and lieu of taxes meeting, both myself, Administrator Dennehy, and Assessor Jim Henderson, last week. We had some fruitful discussions about, you know, the policy and, you know, talked about some financial figures and data. We're accumulating data right now, you know, we're going to be working within our own personnel departments that often service some of our nonprofits to get some more data, and we'll be looking to, you know, build a partnership, I think that's a key word, a partnership with our nonprofits, and look to establish, you know, some sort of, you know, back-and-forth, you know, dialogue to, you know, hopefully help our taxpayers. I mean, that's the goal, and I think that, you know, it's overdue, I think we've had a lot of talk about this, and now it's time to kind of put some things into action, but I thought it was productive, if you want to add anything.
No, also, I reached out to Chief King and Chief Grant, and they're both compiling that data that Slick, Burns was talking about, just to see, you know, what type of assets are being, and services are being relegated to these nonprofits, so...
So what we're going to do is we'll create an action plan, and I think that we'll follow up accordingly, we'll meet regularly, and, you know, find out where we can, where we can kind of either set the bar and, or, you know, kind of share resources in some capacity. Secondly, we had an incredible meeting, I'll say incredible because it's very positive, with Curry College and Milton Youth Hockey, so the town, Curry, Milton Youth Hockey on Yule and Rank. And I want to thank originally Senator Timmelti for pulling these groups together along with the DCR, and, you know, I think we've had a lot of good dialogue, I think we have figured out whether it be scheduling, needs, access, priorities for each group, so that we can strike an agreement. I think our next step now will be to meet with the DCR. We'll be looking at a 10-year permit. You know, I basically would say that we have an agreement in principle at this date. We'll have some more information to share after we meet with the DCR, though.
That's good news.
Yeah. And we are still pursuing the 25-year round?
The 10-year permit is what Curry and the state would like to do at this point in time, I think the 25-year, we could get to that, but there's some financial commitments from the state, potential financial commitments from the state and Curry College related to the 10-year, so I think that that's very beneficial to us as a town, you know?
Okay.
And then, lastly, I just want to congratulate, boy, this isn't going to get old, the indoor track team from Milton High School, the boys team and girls team, they're just winning everything, state champions again, so...
Great.
I hate this hum, it's the whole hum, here we go again, but congratulations to all of them. They've built a dynasty, and, you know, at some point, we have to have a parade for these guys, you know? That's all I've got.
That's good, very good. Congratulations to the team. Yeah, maybe we'll have to have them come back into the, you had them in at one of our meetings last year, so maybe we should at least do that, but a parade would be fun, too.
We'll have to figure something out.
Figure something out, yeah.
Nice banner.
Okay, any other reports?
No.
We had no citizen speak tonight. Are there any other future agenda items we'd like to add, other than what we've talked about in the last couple of meetings?
Not really, no.
Okay. We have no executive session tonight, and it did turn out to be a short meeting, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, we are adjourned.